I can volunteer to go first.
Okay.
All right. So, the budgets that I prepare include engineering, the Public Works Construction Fund budget, and the stormwater utility budget, at least a portion of it. So, I guess, starting at page thirty-five of the budget, the draft budget for the engineering department, I'll just walk through the highlights of the budgets and explain some things as we go, but certainly if there's questions, please feel free to jump in and ask them. So, for 2024, no proposed increases to any positions or personnel in the department for wages and all of the office supplies, everything identified there. The largest increase is under contract payments for thirty-two thousand five hundred. In short, the thirty thousand of that is for two assessor plats to be done primarily on the northwest side of the city, associated with five upcoming road projects that we have in the neighborhood. So, it covers nearly a hundred parcels. And essentially, what assessor plats do is they solidify and update all of the monumentation for the parcels that are out there. So, not only do we receive benefit for our road construction projects when we go to survey and do the design, but it's something the property owners see benefit with, as well as real estate agents and other personnel to deal with land records and such. Moving on to the engineering department equipment replacement, annually, nine thousand dollars is put into that fund. Basically, the types of equipment that we have include our two GPS units, our robotic total station. You know, those are our primary pieces of equipment. Our plotter, that was something that was replaced this year. We've got a current balance of forty-four thousand. And typically, we've got, you know, there's one hundred and five thousand in purchase of equipment that of, equipment in the fund that, one hundred and five thousand dollars in the original purchase price. So, that's roughly, you know, about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand in replacement value that we have equipment for that's funded through this replacement fund. Moving on to, I guess, with that, is there any questions at this point initially?
Joe, I mean, this, I'm just trying to figure out how this, so there's eight, you list eight and a half full-time employees, your wages are two hundred and one thousand? Is that divided, or is that? Yeah, I figured that was a Tim question.
Sure. You know, with cost system, in the cost system, we call them cost system employees, that would be the engineering department, street department, parking wreck, and wastewater. They charge through various budgets, their maintenance budgets, construction budgets, and their operating budgets. So, like, the engineering home department budget only reflects a portion of the staffing costs, because some of those are allocated to construction projects. They do some work, you know, for the wastewater and also in other maintenance accounts. So, their wages are spread throughout the budget. And that's why, you know, I kind of alluded to this in previous meetings, that's why one of my budget analyses is, is that I take all the cost system budgets, and I add up all the labor and incidental labor, which is all their benefits, and then I compare that to their actual staffing costs to make sure that, you know, what we have budgeted and what we have actual is, you know, the same. So, that's why some of these line items are for wages, doesn't necessarily reflect the number of full-time employees they have, or number of full-time equivalent.
So, this is the accounting of it, and then we'll see this in Paul's budget, I'm assuming, as well? Just, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to curb and gutter maintenance. For the values that are identified there, we've got a thirty-seven thousand dollar increase that's proposed. You might recall from this year's bids that we did for all the maintenance work, the unit costs that we received were significantly higher than what we would normally anticipate. Fortunately, we do expect those unit prices to stay higher through next year as well. So, we're, we built this budget using those higher unit prices to try to still accomplish some curb and gutter maintenance in twenty twenty-four. In fact, with this year's work, the bid prices were, they were significant enough, and we found more value in moving those dollars into sidewalk maintenance for this particular year. But, you know, hopefully, this upcoming construction season, we'll be able to accomplish some much-needed curb and gutter maintenance. In addition to the sidewalk maintenance, that's, this is the first year that we've got a maintenance account and a sidewalk outlay, which is on page eighty-three of the Public Works Construction Fund. So, the wages that are represented here in the sidewalk maintenance account on page thirty-seven, those are actually split across both of those portions of the budget, the outlay and the maintenance. In fact, most of the wages would be allocated to the outlay, but I'll run through everything here, just want to point that out upfront. So, the forty-two thousand dollars that are identified in contract payments, that's primarily just for sidewalk joint cutting. So, we find, this is something we started, I don't know, maybe three, four years ago, where there's a company that comes in that can cut the joints rather than removing and replacing the panels of sidewalk. And we look at a cost per square foot of anywhere from two dollars to four dollars per equivalent panel replacement, as opposed to actually replacing all of the panels at twenty dollars a square foot. So, there's tremendous value in saw cutting the joints where we can, and that's what the forty-two thousand five hundred dollars in contract payments covers. I guess, just to highlight the portion of the sidewalk outlay, though, that's specific to the removal and replacement costs that's proposed in twenty twenty-four. It's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. It's primarily taking a maintenance portion. This year, working with Paul, he developed a twelve-section area of the city, which creates a rotation of their maintenance activities, so things time out in an appropriate manner. And so, in an effort to try to at least propose a budget that attempts to keep up, keep a pace with the replacement, that's what we believe would cover the particular area east of, the two areas are identified there, primarily east of A Street, north of the expressway, between Sixteenth Street and East Grand, and then between East Grand Avenue and Sixteenth Street, from Chestnut Street to State Trunk Highway fifty-four.
Jake?
Before you go too much further down, I don't, so we don't have to jump back, the sign of the sidewalk, which, as you mentioned, has been a huge benefit compared to replacing, it's going down, but is that going to mean, is that because there's been less identified that needs it, or are we just providing less of that?
It's a reduction that shows up here, because last year, the sidewalk maintenance covered both cutting and removal and replacement costs. So, the cutting work that we've got identified here, the forty-two thousand five hundred, it's pretty much the same as what we budgeted for that specific work last year. And it's adequate for the area that we're looking to cut joints in. That's the value that we need to accomplish the expected number of joints in those areas.
Okay, so we're not reducing cutting to replace more at a higher cost, or just, it's just being placed somewhere else in the budget?
Yeah, the difference between, you know, eighty-two thousand six fifty and the forty-two thousand five hundred, the sidewalk cutting's basically the same value as it was last year for contract payments. The difference, though, for removal and replacement costs, that's what shows up in the sidewalk outlay on page eighty-three.
So, are we replacing more now that we could have cut, and that's why we're not cutting?
We are proposing to replace more this, in twenty twenty-four than prior years. But, in any particular area, there's, you know, when we go into an area, there's certain joints, certain panels, that, you know, perhaps the sidewalk panels have heaved to such a degree that it's no longer cost-effective to cut them. Like, you end up having to cut way too much, it gets too expensive, or there's other defects, there's mid-span cracks in the panels, or spalling of the surface where it's like, okay, well, we could cut the joint, but we also have these other defects that require us to remove and replace those.
Okay.
All right. So, moving on to traffic control on page thirty-eight. So, I guess, just a little bit of background on the traffic signals. I've received a couple of questions on this more recently, so just explain it to the council. The city owns the, all of the traffic signals, even the ones on connecting highways. They're all owned and operated by the City of Wisconsin Rapids. And the city hires waterworks and lighting staff, in particular, the electricians that are employed at the utility, to keep the traffic signals operating. And so, if there's a knockdown, you know, they'll send crews out, you know, the twenty-four hour service, to pick up the debris and reset a new pole and make sure that it's functioning and operational. So, that's the line item in there for Waterworks and Lighting Commission of eighty thousand dollars. That's what's anticipated for payment for material and labor and equipment for their work on our traffic signals. In addition, there is a proposed, at least proposed at this time, an effort to do a little bit of signal timing efforts at the expressway and A Street, partly due to ongoing complaints and potential timing issues at that location. As I've mentioned at the Public Works Committee meeting recently, we are doing some evaluation in-house on that. And so, depending on what we find, you know, we are anticipating that, doing a ten thousand dollar signal timing project there, getting new counts, making sure that things are timed appropriately, both for, mainly for convenience. That's probably the biggest, the biggest benefit is providing signal timing that's more convenient. So, that's proposed. We also have a new, I guess, a new requirement that came from the Office of Commission of Railroads, just in twenty twenty-three, to do annual railroad preemption testing. So, the three grade crossings that have traffic signals that are tied in with the railroad are at Chase Street, Grand Avenue, and High Street. And so, I've had four thousand dollars identified there to, for assistance in making sure that we're getting that test accomplished appropriately, so that we can meet those requirements in twenty twenty-four. I guess, any questions on traffic control?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I had a question on the waterworks and lighting. It looks like over the past four years, that budget has more than doubled. Has the, there been more accidents, or what's the reason for that?
No, it's largely driven by accidents. I'm not particularly, I don't have a particular answer on the jump from the thirty-seven thousand up to seventy thousand offhand. I mean, certainly, we could go back and look and see what that, what that jump might be.
Is that a bill that we get from them, or, like, how does that work?
Anytime they come out and do a service call, you know, either a knockdown, or they might get a call that, hey, the signals are flashing, or they, you know, something's not functioning appropriately, they'll send a trouble ticket, guys come out, they'll investigate. Sometimes, they'll find that there's nothing wrong, or they can't find anything wrong. Maybe they'll reset the conflict monitor that's in the cabinet, or do some other analysis to check and make sure everything's operating as it should be. So, yeah, it's largely just, if there's a complaint that something's not working right, a malfunction, a knockdown, that's when they're called out to investigate.
Okay, and you said that we own those lights and everything? Do we have to pay any sort of rent, or, like, how does that get metered for, like, electric use? It's just?
So, each of the cabinets have their own electric meter on them. So, that's, you know, we pay that electric rate, just like we would for, like, at your house. So, for each of the intersections, we, electric usage is metered.
Thank you.
While you're on it, so, do you know how twenty twenty-three is going to come in? Is that, is it going to be at that seventy-five, or below, or?
That's a good question. I didn't, Tim, you got an answer for that?
Yeah, right now, year-to-date, we've spent about sixty-eight thousand three hundred nineteen dollars.
Sixty-eight, you said?
Yeah, sixty-eight three, for year-to-date.
Thank you.
All right. I guess, moving on to Public Works Construction Fund, page seventy-nine. Street construction. So, we have three primary road reconstruction projects proposed in twenty twenty-four, all of which were part of the CIP project, or the capital improvement plan that the council's already seen. We have survey completed, working on finalizing design for Ninth Street, Peach Street to Chestnut Street, it's a five-block project. Roadway is approximately fifty-six years old, with poor underground, poor condition of the underground utilities. The overall project cost for that, including the utilities, is around seven hundred thousand. In addition, Wiley Street, from A Street to Twelfth Street, four-block project, seventy-year-old road, again, with poor underground utilities, especially the sanitary, which will be, we're proposing a reroute for that. Total overall project cost, around seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. And Lincoln Street, it's approximately half mile, some of it is seventy years old, and some of it's fifty-six years old. It'll be a full reconstruction with new utilities where needed, if, certainly, if there's any utilities that we don't need to replace, they're, you know, left in place. Proposed overall project cost for that project is just over two million dollars. We do have a couple of parking lots proposed. I think there's maybe some reductions in the Johnson Street project from what's proposed in here at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. I think that's being reduced to just a patch only, due to some possible changes in use in the near future. Fourth Avenue Parking Lot, that's immediately adjacent to City Hall here, just across Fourth Avenue. Those parking lots are in poor condition, so we'd look to get those repaved. In addition, concrete pavement patching, joint sealing, it's, the two hundred and thirteen thousand is being proposed to finalize the pavement patches needed on State Trunk Highway thirteen thirty-four, north of Wilson Street primarily. And then, we do, for all of our projects, you know, we put together our project cost estimates, we always apply contingency to each of those individual projects. And then, we add up those, that list of contingency dollars, and identify it on the contingency lining up here. So, just so you're aware, each of the components of the Public Works Construction Fund have this contingency portion, some of it's utilized for the projects that are listed, and some of it isn't, but that varies from year to year and project to project. Questions?
Yeah, Joe, what do you attribute to the reduction in material costs from twenty-three to twenty-four? I'm pretty sure I know the answer, I'd like to hear from you.
Reduction in material costs? That's a good question. Specifically for street construction, I guess, in general, for our overall Public Works Construction Fund, you know, across all the utilities and the street, it's largely variable from project to project. Sometimes, we do underground utilities, sometimes we don't. You know, Lincoln Street is definitely a unique project, that, you know, we're narrowing the pavement there. We are adding a rec trail adjacent to it. I guess, I haven't analyzed it to come up with anything specific offhand. Yeah, yeah, I can look into it, though, and get back to you. I mean, it is an interesting, you know, a hundred thousand dollars less in material costs this year than last year. It'd be interesting to find out what that is.
You would think you'd see that go the other way, especially with costs rising the way they are, particularly with concrete, with twenty percent last year and probably eighteen percent this year, so.
Yeah, and certainly, our, you know, our asphalt costs are up, concrete costs are up, so, yeah. I guess, moving on to water main construction. Nothing really specific here to point out, just that we have the three main road reconstruction projects that have water main associated costs with them. Sanitary sewer. Again, three road reconstruction projects. In addition to that, we have West Side Interceptor Rehab Project, that's something that's primarily being led and coordinated by the wastewater department. I guess, we're supporting that project from an engineering department standpoint. They do have a consultant, though, but at this point, just kind of a status update, they completed a cost analysis, you know, comparing different options, and they're preparing to submit a Clean Water Fund intend-to-apply application, which is due at the end of this week. And following that, there'll be a facility plan and some design work, and that's largely what the hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars covers, is some of those upfront preliminary design and facility planning efforts. In addition, there's sewer lining, that's something that, over the past several years, we've been doing more and more of that, where appropriate. When it's not coupled with, or when sanitary sewer rehab isn't coupled with a pavement replacement, it's more cost-effective to do the sewer repairs with a cured-in-place liner. And the two hundred and seventy-two thousand that's budgeted is primarily to line the sewer on Seventeenth Avenue from, I believe, West Grand South towards Gainer Avenue. Just moving on to storm sewer construction, again, primary road reconstruction projects, there's some dollars identified for some catch basins and storm sewer replacement with the Fourth Avenue Parking Lot. And then, in addition, the One Mile Pond dredging and dam repair project. We do see some recent progress in getting permits lined up for that finally here. So, we're hoping that within the next three to four weeks here, that we actually have those permits in hand.
Can you just touch on the two hundred thousand for contract payments?
So, the two hundred thousand in contract payments that, let me just look here. So, that'll largely be for the One Mile Creek Project, specifically for the dam repair. The repair of that structure would be bid out to a contractor, and we'd expect it to be around two hundred thousand. And then, the next page is the sidewalk outlay, which we kind of already touched on with the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars identified there. That covers Public Works.
I have a question on these contingency payments. How are those figured out? And, like, what exactly are they used for? And if they don't get used, then what happens to that money?
Sure. So, when we go through and develop a cost estimate for each of the projects, you know, each project is, it's a percentage that's applied to that overall project cost estimate as a contingency. And then, collectively, through all of the projects, all of those contingencies are added, you know, they're added up, summed up into the appropriate street, water, sanitary, storm sewer locations, you know, appropriately for that, for that portion of the budget. So, it's, when we develop our cost estimates, I should back up a little bit, when we develop our cost estimates, they're broken down by street costs, sanitary costs, water costs, storm sewer costs. So, there's subtotals in there. We apply, so we apply that contingency percentage appropriately to each of those, I guess, funding categories. And then, the overall summation of those is what you see in the street portion of the budget. Once we go through the construction year, if, you know, the original intent was setting them up this way, is that, one, it's clearly identified as, okay, this is how much contingency is available in the street budget, in the water main budget. One, so that we know, okay, if we've got overruns, you know, how much buffer might we have. In addition, if there's funds remaining near the end of the year, they've, some of those funds have been used to pave alleys, or parking lots, or other appropriate types of projects. I think there's more discretion in the street portion of the budget, maybe a little less in the water and sanitary, just because, in order to do a lot of those other projects, they're more expensive, and usually, you have street costs associated with those as well. If they're not used, I guess, Tim, I'm not sure exactly where they go, but.
Sure. The contingencies in the street and sanitary storm and water main are funded with the reserves in the Public Works Construction Fund, the street and the stormwater. So, if we don't use them, it, no new money is budgeted for the contingency accounts. We're using reserves as that contingency. For water and sanitary, if there's additional costs incurred, those are reimbursed by either water and light, or the wastewater.
So, those aren't included in the new budget? Is that what you're saying? I mean, because it adds up to quite a bit.
Right. It's a pure contingency that is supported by the reserve. So, we're not, like, budgeting additional dollars, or levy dollars, or other two thousand and twenty-four budget funds to support those contingency accounts. It's past reserves that have built up in the Public Works Construction Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Right?
Joe, can you speak to the storm sewer construction funding, property tax levy in particular, and the potential that maybe our stormwater utility fund is underfunded? is underfunded?
Yeah, so, Tim and I were just talking today, in fact, about the, the total revenue generated by the stormwater utility. It's just over a million dollars, I believe, that's generated through the utility. And I don't know if, I'm not sure if it was updated last year, or the rates increased last year or not, but yeah, a portion of it is, is still being covered by the, the property tax levy at this point. And I think any updates to the, the rates for the stormwater utility in 2024, I think is something that Tim is, is still working on.
Yeah, right, yeah, right now, you're looking at, you know, of a budget 937,000 that, you know, 514,750 comes from the stormwater utility fund, the fund, and the, a good chunk of that is the One Mile Creek project that's being funded with the stormwater utility fund, and then also an additional 175,750 out of the utility to support the storm sewer construction. But obviously, you know, there's, there's still, you know, over the past years, we've, we've raised that to kind of start building that so that it can fund 100% of the stormwater construction. And about 1% increase in the equivalent residential unit rate is about approximately $10,000.
Jake.
Is now the time to discuss the stormwater rate? Yeah, I mean, we're, we're open and community of the whole, and I don't believe we have this item on anything else and we're looking at this budget, so. I believe the goal, obviously, would be to get it up to what the cost is. That makes sense? So, Tim, what's that rate? Or what, what would we need to get it to, to even out?
Oh, I, I would have to calculate that, but basically, like I said, you know, you know, a 5%. You know, right now, I'm kind of looking at the CPI.
Yeah.
You know, for consumer price index for all urban customers, and that's about 5.4%. And if you'd apply that to the rate, that would increase, you know, the revenue for the stormwater utility by about $58,000.
Which would even out the costs of what we're putting in?
Well, it would, it would go to reduce, you know, the amount that either we have to levy or borrow for storm sewer construction.
Right, which is the purpose of the stormwater utility.
Right.
Okay. I would propose that you build that in. I think it makes sense and it's overdue. It's almost like the, the purpose of the utility that was created isn't being utilized, that we're having to take levy and take funds from other places.
Right.
When that was the whole point of the utility. So, I don't know if you need a consensus from council or what, but that, that would be my proposition.
I mean, to me, this is, this is kind of like a no-brainer. I mean, otherwise, we're, we're, we're essentially bonding and paying interest on these funds when, you know, paying them upfront is definitely going to be more cost savvy. So, I, I too agree with, with taking this route.
Can we take that, I mean, can we have a motion a second and approve this tonight? And it's going back to council anyways.
Right. I mean, you could just direct me to, obviously, build this into the, the budget model. I mean, ultimately, we're gonna, I'm gonna have to bring back a resolution that, you know, to, to be considered by the council. And usually, that coincides with the resolution, adopt the budget at the November 14th council meeting, so that's when, if that's what you want building above, I'd bring a resolution and at that time was when the council would consider it for approval.
Frederick.
Okay, so I'm really ignorant when it comes to this. I have no idea what the stormwater utility is or how it's billed, and if somebody could just give a quick synopsis of what this is?
Sure, I can cover that. So, the, the way the charge is calculated and, I guess, the, yeah, the, the user fee is, it's based on hard surface, on, on properties in the city. And so, and it's, it's all based on equivalent residential units, so on average throughout the city, the single-family home is, has 2,620 square feet of impervious area. And so that's, that's where the term ERU comes from. I'm not sure if that's on that document or not, but, so one ERU has that much square foot of hard surface. And then that's applied to, like, commercial and industrial type properties that, on a square foot basis, to derive a, a cost per ERU. And that current monthly charge for one ERU is $3.75. And so if a property has, you know, 20 ERUs, it's 20 times $3.75 per month.
Okay, so that's the average per residence is $20 per month?
Yes. Well, so, a, a single-family residence was utilized to come up with this unit of, that's called an equivalent residential unit. And with that one ERU, there's so much square foot of hard surface. And so the rate that was set is applied to the, the ERUs, which then comprises so much square foot of hard surface.
So do you have an average of what it would be per residence or?
Yeah, so, so for a single-family residence, it's $3.75 a month.
Oh, okay.
The, that, what's reflected is the annual rate, the $45 and then.
That would make sense, thank you.
And, you know, and that fee, it obviously not only goes to support storm sewer construction, but initially when the fee's up, you know, back, I don't know how many years ago, when we had to do all the retention ponds, stormwater retention ponds, that's what this fee funded. It also funds your street sweeping, your storm sewer maintenance, and then, and then there's some administration updating the model. Water and Light charges us a, a monthly fee to, you know, collect that on their utility bill and as long as storm sewer construction.
I just want to clarify one point, those, hearing the conversation is that this, you're paying for this either way, whether it's through the levy or, and, and some, we're talking about bonding for it and potentially paying interest, so this is more of a financial move to bring the utility up to what it should be rather than taking it from other places. So this doesn't mean you're paying more money. It, on the back end, we're taking, it's happening anyways, this is just aligning it with what it actually is, if that makes sense. Because I think they might see the charge on their bill and, yeah, of the understanding that it's increased, but it's budgeted for projects that are being paid for with their taxes either way, so.
Do we need a motion to direct you to do that?
I, I don't think, I, you know.
No, it's just a financial move.
Right, yeah, I'll incorporate it into the budget model and update.
Okay. Thank you.
So that, that pretty much covers everything in the Public Works Construction Fund. There's a little bit of additional that I could cover in the stormwater utility. We kind of touched on that now with the stormwater administration, but I know Paul has portions of that as well, so maybe we, we could cover the remaining portions in conjunction with, with his, I guess.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Joe?
Please stand.
Yeah.
You're up.
All right.
Okay, so I will try to get myself straight here. We'll start with the stormwater utility since we're talking about it. So our portion of the budget is, is the street sweeping and the storm sewer maintenance. The street sweeping budget showing a reduction in, in wages due to kind of a error on my part over the last few years. We kind of had duplicate hours, so we actually had more hours charged to it than what we should have. But, so that's what the reduction shows. Really, the other, the other change to that also is, is that two years into our contract here with waste management, there's an increase of $2.30 per ton. This is the third year that we're gonna have to be paying for the sweepings. The sweeping is simply, or the, sorry, disposal of that is just based off of a three-year average. A lot of it depends on the type of winter that we have because we still currently sand our residential streets versus salting. So if we have ice storms and things like that where we have to sand, there's more debris for us to pick up. If we don't, obviously, there's less. So, the street sweeping, like I say, is, is covering, going through the neighborhoods, it's mandated by the DNR that we go through certain areas every two weeks. Otherwise, we try to cover the whole entire city in one month with two sweepers. In order to accomplish that, we do need to throw a third sweeper at it for a, a one week out of the month. Doesn't always happen, but we try our best to meet those requirements. And then in the spring of the year, obviously, again, we go through all of the hard boulevards, all the medians and everything like that, sweeping the debris that got deposited from the snow, um, snow plowing, trying to clean up the city that normally takes us about a month to do everything. That's also included in that. Any questions on that?
Jake.
A couple things. When you spoke to it about the street sweeping, I believe it was that part, in regards to it being, the wages being off, did you just charge the wrong fund, correct? It, it's not like anybody got paid twice.
No, that's correct. So what happens is, is obviously, you know, we have a very large chip sealing program, and so there is about four weeks of the month, sorry, four weeks of the summer that the employee is charging his time to the chip sealing, which wasn't counted in there. So in essence, I had it budgeted twice is really what, what all that was, so.
Right. I understood that, I just wanted to clarify. I'll give you the opportunity, or not opportunity, but can you explain now, and I know this information, why we salt residential, or sand residential roads instead of salt? You brought that up, and that's a question that I get a lot about how the policy's changed over the years and how our roads are in the winter.
So really, it, it comes down to money, I guess. It's the policy that was set up in place prior to me being here. It, it's a matter of paying $50 a yard for sand salt, which is just creating an abrasive surface so that somebody can stop, versus $97 a ton, which equates to, I can do the math for you quick, but it's over $100 a yard. So, you, you're, you're using a product that, number one, we don't plow a residential street every single snow event, you know, so we don't, technically according to policy, we don't plow unless there's been accumulation of over three inches of snow. I might have just said, I think it's actually four. But if we have two, two separate events, you know, so it snows on Monday, we get two inches, it snows on Thursday, we get another two inches, most of the time on Thursday we're plowing everything then. Because over the last two snow events, we've, we've made, met that policy. So, that being said, if there is some, some snowpack that's there and you go and throw sand or salt at it, it's not necessarily going to cut it anyways, it's just gonna create more water. Where, if you go in through and you put sand salt, which it's a very small percentage of salt that's on it, the sand is going to stay there as an abrasive surface, you know, so that somebody can break and, and make it through the intersection okay.
Thank you. And, and salt is, is regulated by the DNR as well?
So the DNR right now, current, is, there is some legislation that's out there trying to obviously protect our waterways. So everybody's doing or trying to become better. There is some legislation out there that's requiring the operators of sand salt trucks to be trained and certified and things like that. We've gone as a group last year to City of Stevens Point. There's a organization called Saltwise out there that's trying to educate and, and promote, obviously, clean water and everything like that, so.
Yes, while we're on the topic of salt, a lot of folks will, will understand that there's, there's a lot of usage of brine out there as well. Has there been any thought to the city potentially switching to a brine system?
Yep, actually, so, two of our trucks, 2018, 2019, the last two salt trucks that we purchased have a pre-wet system on it, so it's not necessarily a straight brine system, but it's pre-wetting the salt, so that, number one, it's a, um, a slot, I can't think of the right word, sorry, it's, but it's, it's not going to bounce off the roadway when it's applied, so it's, it's, and plus two, salt is the chemical reaction that actually causes the salt to, to melt and it needs moisture to start that chemical reaction. So sometimes the snow is not, you know, wet enough in order to get it to work right away, so you end up double applicating it. So, 2018, or, 2018, when we bought those last two trucks, they both have 500 gallons of brine tanks on them for pre-wetting, for pre, the salt prior to being, being displaced. And then, in this year's budget, we have just finished building a pretreatment system, so we will now be, have the capability to pre-treat our roadways prior to a, an event. So, that's what you're referring to is a brine system. And so there's goods and bad about that. You know, you obviously still have to do it the right way because if you're pre-treating a storm on Friday for something that's going to happen on Sunday, you can't just go out and spray straight brine because it's going to be gone, there's probably going to be 30% residual effect to it from what you actually did. So, obviously, it's going to be something new to us. We're going to have some trial and error to it, but we're educating ourselves so that we make the right decisions. But that truck will be, is, is ready to go. Actually, here, I think this last week, we finished building it, so.
Are you able to speak to any cost comparison to maybe utilizing more of a brine system moving forward? Do you, do you have any idea what that looks like at this time?
So with our, with using the pre-treatments or pre-wetting, there, so we, we have two trucks that do the east side and two tru, oh, sorry, two and a half trucks that do the east side and one and a half trucks that do the west side. Unfortunately, the west side trucks are smaller trucks, they're older trucks that don't have the, the pre-wetting system on it. You know, we get quicker melting on the east side with those tandem axle trucks than we do on the west side. And then, you know, the, the claim is a 30, 30% reduction, you know, so. Because obviously, it's staying on the roadway instead of going up in the snowbanks.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, we'll be hitting, plowing snow here in a little bit, so we can go back to that if we need to. Storm sewer maintenance, again, funded through the stormwater utility. That activity is a matter of going through and rebuilding the catch basins. You know, the past practice, prior, let's say, the last 15 years, was using concrete mortar rings to adjust the catch basin great height to wherever a curb and gutter was. Like I say, the 15 years ago, I believe it was early on in my career here, our engineering depart, department found, um, plastic rings, and we've been using them ever since. You know, obviously, the biggest thing with salt is, is, you know, decay of those concrete mortar rings because it's not really that good of a product. So, a lot of our work with the, the storm sewer maintenance is going through and rebuilding those catch basins because the rings have failed. When the rings fail, the casting tends to settle, curb and gutter around it settles, and so the water isn't getting to where it needs to be. Curb and gutter around it settles and so the water isn't getting to where it needs to be. So we typically, like with this budget, we typically go through and um, like I say, majority of it is maintaining it. We do still, in some of the older areas of the city, they used actually um, concrete bricks to, to build the catch basin years ago. And those, we, we typically get a half a dozen to 10 of those that we have to rebuild completely, take it all the way down to the basin, rebuild it. So that's also part of this budget. So you will see that there is a, a slight reduction in labor in this. Some of that is just, we're um, we're probably year three um, in with the wastewater department going through and actually grading and inspecting the catch basins when they clean them. And so we're trying to do preventative maintenance instead of reactive maintenance. And uh, that again, Joe earlier re, alluded to it. This year, I finished a product that, that I've been working on for um, over a year. We developed um, took the whole entire city of Wisconsin Rapids and broke it into 12 different areas. The reason for the 12 different areas is, is typically um, our chip seal program in the residential areas lasts anywhere from 10 to 12 years. And so it's trying to keep on a cycle with that. And so um, with that, you know, prior to our chip seal, we will do all of our asphalt maintenance. We'll do all of our catch basin maintenance. We'll do all of our sidewalk maintenance. We'll do any maintenance that we have to just so that we don't have to come back and disturb those people for hopefully 12 years, you know, because um, we've had many conversations with Patrick about the chip sealing program, you know, which, which, that's why we changed it to going through and, and doing an entire area instead of doing this street this year and then four years from now. You know, I live on a corner street. Now we're gonna go and do the east-west street. So now we're just going in and we're doing every street in that area with the, the desire and the hope that we won't be coming back for, for five years to do some sort of maintenance activity. And we definitely won't be coming back for at least 12 years to chip seal it. So um, number one, it's, it's uh, more cost effective because we spend a smaller amount of time driving from Joe, road to road. We're right there. You know, older personry home, you saw it this year. We were up in there in three days. We did our whole program in three days versus, versus five. So there's cost savings. It's, you know, disturbs the area less. Um, and then we're in and out. So. But the intent for the storm sewer maintenance, or sorry, um, our sewer maintenance crew goes through, cleans them every year. Not every year, but on a, on a 12-year cycle. When they clean them, they inspect them. If they're starting to see a failure, they then notify us that we can go and try to fix that failure before it turns into a major failure. Rather than waiting for the, the casting to settle, for a hole to show up in front of it. You know, then again, it's a 150 to $300 repair versus a, a $1,500 repair, you know. So trying to get out in front of this stuff instead of waiting for it to happen. Uh, the one error that you'll see on, on uh, on page 87 there, there's contract payments of $77,100. That's actually, sorry, actually supposed to be material costs. I just got ahead of my, or behind myself and entered it in the wrong line when we entered it into munis. So. Any questions on that?
Just make a comment. Um, this is, it has nothing to do with the, but you know, some of the page numbers are off between what you have and what that. It's because um, as I, as the individual department budgets were completed, I gave them a copy to review. And then, then later on, it was assembled, what you got and the department head's got that, but then the, the page numbers changed. So that's why when you hear a page number that's different from yours, it's just because there's two different versions, but they're the same budget. There's, you know, it's the most current. So. Nope.
I don't have anything on the stormwater administration. All right, just a few more things on the stormwater administration portion of the stormwater utility budget. Let's see here. So there is a uh, $22,000 decrease that's proposed in the budget this year. It's primarily related to uh, contract payments that are, you know, they were one-time um, level of effort in 2023. Related to our uh, DNR MS4 permit. That uh, you know, isn't occurring again in 2024. So that's largely where uh, that reduction comes into play. But just in general, uh, the city's regulated for all of our stormwater outfalls by the Wisconsin DNR through the MS4 permit. And uh, with that permit, there's an annual report that, that we need to submit to them. With information related to each of the program requirements that they have. And some of those program requirements are such things as public education and outreach, uh, illicit discharge detection and elimination program where we're um, sampling and testing the storm sewer outfalls annually um, for pollutants. And, and if we find them, we, we try to trace them to the, to the source and, and eliminate those. In addition, there's um, construction site erosion control and, you know, all of our, our stormwater permitting for large development sites that um, would also need a uh, a state permit. We also review and permit induced construction uh, site inspections for um, you know, that's, those are all, I guess, portions of uh, of this administration budget. It's large, largely promulgated by the, the MS4 requirements with the state.
All right. Um, so now talking about uh, uh, street department in all of our maintenance activities that are, are normal funding system here or whatever. So you'll see on top, our department has uh, 43 and a half full-time employees equivalent uh, that we have um, uh, it's budgeted every single year, two LTE positions, which is a seasonal um, employee. And, but we have never been able to fill it since its inception. We have one, we've been able to have one, but we can never get over that hump or whatever. The one current person that we have is one of our employees that came back after being gone for six months. The requirement of the, or a policy. Then we also have um, five seasonal um, college students, 18 years or older. And again, this year, we were not able to fill those whole, um, those positions. Whether it be wages, whether it be desire to work outside, um, can't tell you. Cause we've done it over the last two years where we raised, raised the summer help wages uh, from what it was. And we, we were not able to fill all that. We actually took everybody that applied. So. Just uh, filling you in there. Street and ma, street administration. So that is 80% of my wages, um, our administrative assistants, and then one of the supervisors. The remainder of that is covered over, or the remainder of our wages are covered um, through, by recycling and the composting. Recycling is, is a, uh, we apply for a state grant every year. And so that's why we include our wages in that for to, cause it's reimbursable that way. Really, the only changes uh, this year, I, I didn't know that it happened last year or whatever, but we're in the process of trying to. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought you were pointing yourself.
No. So before you got too far ahead of it and it, it's in your budget and whatever, I think that we should take it out. It's actually not in the budget. It's just listed as a position, the public works superintendent. And I, I think we need to get that to HR and clean that up and discuss eliminating that position rather than it show up on the budget every year. As we know, I mean, that position was chose not to be budgeted for in previous years, but at this time and remains blank. So I think that's a.
No, no, yeah, I, I mean, the only reason it's in there because for the actuals, for the comparison years, that's the only reason why it's in there. So you see that for actually 2022, 2020 and 2021, we had some expenditures related to that. And so that's why, the only reason why it's still in the budget because on a three-year actual comparison, there's expenditures related to that position.
Technically, doesn't the position still exist? It's just not filled though? I guess is what I'm talking about.
Works director you talking about?
Yeah, cause.
I think the, the position was eliminated.
Did it go through HR and then?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. I, I wasn't sure. Seeing it in there confused me. So.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Um, so last year, um, sorry, I've gotta get my thought back. Um, so last year, we uh, went through and did some research on as far as what our rental rates were. And I tried to kick the can down the road um, in that current budget. This year, Tim and I were able to get together and we actually went through and updated our rental rates. And so the reflection of uh, the budget and the reduction uh, in the vehicle expense was just simply getting things to current rate. Otherwise, we had been operating off of 29, 2019 rental rates. But Tim had other projects uh, with FEMA stuff from the windstorm and everything like that. So we finally got our rental rates up to current. Um, and so that's where you'll see, see where some of our budget items, there is some increases in the equipment rates was just simply because they hadn't been adjusted since 2019. So just stating that out ahead of time here is that we, we got them back currently where we need to be. So any questions on, uh, so the other piece of it that's new is, is a $5,200 for software licensing. We're in the process of trying to get rid of our paper time sheets. And with the different financial softwares that we have in place, this is one of our um, licensing fees for that software to be able to get rid of those, those paper time sheets. Uh, street department training. Um, the biggest increase in this one is last year, we had one staff member that needed to go to um, Michigan to get their CDL. This year, we currently have two um, full-time employees that need to go there uh, to get their class B CDL. They're given 12 months to get their CDL. And then also, um, I believe it was in uh, July or August, I went to the HR committee to request permission to send staff members to um, uh, Michigan to get their class A because it's not currently an issue right now. But I see in four or five years that we're gonna have an issue with having enough employees having a class A CDL. Which for those that don't know, class A CDL allows them to pull a trailer where a class B is simply just to drive the truck. Obviously, there's other situations that we could go and hire somebody to come and move us from job site to job site. But number one, um, doesn't give us the flexibility and then we're relying on somebody else to do it, you know, and we have the equipment to do it. It's just, you know, we are getting to the situation where our staffing is now, you know, not necessarily people that were in the construction industry. And so they're, we're starting to catch up with these people that were giving class Bs. And so we're, we're budgeting to send two additional staff up there then to also get that class A from a class B. It may end up only being one because we are currently uh, two staff members short. And we have an offer out there to one of them and they don't also have a CDL. So depending upon where that falls, you know, we may end up having to get, send three to get their class B versus the two that we currently have budgeted. So. Otherwise, uh, we're including to uh, I'm, I'm putting money in there because we've, we've used former elder person Thad Kubashak to do our OSHA 10 training. And I'm still including money in there to hire a different consultant just in case that isn't available because he's a very busy person. And so um, you know, the last two years, that money has not been spent because Thad's been able to help us out with his, his work and stuff like that. The other thing that's included in the street department training is um, the $500 tool allowance for the five mechanics that we have. And then also the uh, boot and shoe allowance for, for our staff. Any other questions?
Why Michigan?
So Michigan, um, number one, most people around here in central Wisconsin are only doing the class A CDL training and it takes a whole entire month. Michigan has a class B uh, training and um, it takes one week for them to go up there. We are, I am looking at other options. The bad part about it is, is that option, the one option that I was made aware of is in the summertime. And it then takes that staff member away from when we need them the most. So. But it's, it's one week, they're gone and, and then a day for them to take their tests. So it's, it's the quickest to get them through it is really the only reason. The, the money actually is relatively the same, just the additional drive time for them to get up there for the class that is, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so then uh, my next item then is the street repair and maintenance.
Sorry, Patrick?
I just had a question on the tool allowance that you have. Now, is that, so people buy their personal tools and bring them in to work on the trucks and then they take them home? Or are there special tools that the city provides for them?
So um, yes, to both of those. So the city requires a mechanic to bring their own tools in. But we also have um, specialty tools, um, larger stuff for working on the excavators and things like that. So um, part of it is, yes, they bring in their own stuff. Jake could probably speak to this better than I could. I don't know that our tool allowances is probably 40% of what the industry is. And actually, we didn't start this. I think this is the third year of it, you know, and so you know, there, there's guys that have 20 to $30,000 in tools, you know. So um, it, it allows them, you know, most of that stuff is lifetime warranty. So if it breaks, that's covered by warranty. But the, things are changing, you know, non-stop. I know there's some special star bits that some of the squad cars have that, you know, are $175 just to, to be able to have them. So.
Yeah, I, I put this in a few years ago. The industry standard, as Paul said, is much higher than what we offered. And originally, we didn't offer anything. And uh, we were actually just discussing this, but in regards to mechanics, I mean, there's a high demand out there. So I think retention for the city is important. And I would like to see us up at industry standard. I'm not gonna propose that right now, but maybe Paul, you could speak to how the guys feel with their current allowance. Or is it enough or are they coming out of pocket for some of their own tools that they're only ever gonna use on city materials? I mean, we just wanna make sure that they're not looking to the private sector and seeing that that's a better option for them and then we're out, one of our mechanics.
Yeah, actually, we have a position that was open for the last uh, three or four months that we were able to fill. Believe the gentleman actually starts this upcoming Monday on the 30th. So um, obviously, I'm sure it, it hasn't been something that we revisited since we started this three years ago, I believe it was. The guys are just happy to get something. And we're really good at if there's a need, that it's kind of a, you know, non-standard tool that, that Mark just gets it to add it to our, to our stock or whatever. There hasn't been anybody that comes to the door and says, hey, I, you know, we should really get 750 or a thousand. Again, they were just happy to get, to get something. But uh, like I said, I, I know it's a percentage of what the industry is, you know, but uh, we can bring some increase next year and see if you guys say yes or no. So. Any other questions there? Okay. Uh, moving on to the street repair and maintenance. This is, when you look at it, may be um, slightly confusing because uh, it's going down, um, but in order to. It's going down, um, but in order to meet the, uh, requirements of the pavement replacement plan. Uh, we had to, uh, because of Tim doing his analysis, we had too much labor when we tried to continue to do the same amount, so. We're not necessarily doing less street maintenance, it's just, again, moving money from one account so that we can do the, the pavement replacement plan. Um, but the, you know, wages are, are relatively same. Um, materials, obviously, our asphalt prices, we're projecting to go up ten percent. Our concrete prices are projecting that we're going up ten percent. Um. So, uh, the other thing of it is, is that with doing, with identifying, uh, in a cyclical matter. Our chip seal program, we typically were around a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty thousand square yards. With this year, because we already have the area identified, we're gonna be down to about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, because that area has, um, projects that were, uh, constructed anywhere from. Uh, five to six years, so the roads are technically not ready to be chip sealed yet, so that's why those areas have been adjusted, so. Um. That kind of, uh, flows into our pavement replacement plan. Um, earlier, I handed out to you that single spreadsheet, just because alls you're seeing is, is the, the lump sum of all of those projects that are identified down in the bottom. Um, that spreadsheet that I gave you is showing what those individual costs, or what those individual projects cost. Um, to, to meet that, that seven hundred thousand. Uh, one thing to say about that is that is all, uh, figured using American asphalt to do the paving. Um. I have not been able to get the county to commit, because this is maintenance work, they technically are able to do the work. And I have not been able to get them to commit to those specific projects yet, it's something that we're working on, hopefully, I will have that for you prior to the end of it. But that could be a cost savings of, you know, some relatively decent amount of money, so. Um, but this is worst-case scenario. Um, it was Joe and I, I's idea with this pavement replacement plan is, is that obviously with material prices going up. You know, ten to fifteen percent, that it's better to try to get as many projects completed this year with the funds that we have. Instead of, you know, doing the minute amount of projects and then carrying it over to next year type thing, so we're just trying to maximize that. Um, you'll see that some of these projects, we're going to, um, do. Um, con- with like our Lincoln Street Construction Project, you know, and redoing that Birch Street project. Um, those that are on the Public Works Committee that we talked about that, you know, trying to do that all at the same time because we're in the area. We don't have to mobilize in again in the future, we can use that crew to do that, week's worth of work or whatever, and then, then we're done, so. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah, just with the, the pavement replacement, this is what the transportation utility fee funds is this pavement replacement program. And I, and I think I've alluded to in, in previous meetings that, you know, the current revenue that's being generated, the fee is coming up. You know, about, rather around a hundred, four hundred and fifteen to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the target was, uh, initially five hundred thousand. And that's due to a variety of factors of, um, we have the special assessment credits. Um, the trip, the number of trips. Overall, has, has decreased because we update based on the most current manual and Joe, correct me if I'm misstating any of this. And also the number of accounts in the initial model with some of the, the multi-tenant properties is one account. And in their initial model, there were, there were three accounts, so those adjustments accounted for that reduction. In the initial, you know, fee that was set for that target of five hundred thousand dollars, so. Um, you know, by ordinance and the transportation utility fee, i- it, um. Um, we can increase the, uh, fee by the Consumer Price Index for the year ended August. Of whatever year this, and this would be twenty-three, um, and so, and that just requires a majority vote, anything above. Uh, the CPI would require two-thirds council, so. Um, kind of similar to the, uh, Stormwater Utility Fees, you know, it might propose to, to increase it for, at least by that, that CPI of five point. Four percent.
Jake?
This, same thing with Stormwater, I'd propose that you build that in, um. The ordinance to go above and beyond for the two-thirds vote was something that I was passionate about putting in there and I, I would stand by that we. We never go over what is allotted for this and what was, what we spent a lot of time on, on making sure the. Transportation utility is, uh, so, but again, for its full purpose of what it was intended to be. We built that in there, so I, I, it would make sense to keep utilizing it as its purpose was. So I don't know, it's a similar thing, I mean, I would make a motion to give you a direction to do it, but I don't. I don't know if you need it, if that's gonna be something that's controversial and needs to be voted on, but. That, that was the purpose of the utility, so.
Right, well, it, it would have to come back, similar to the Stormwater Utility, it, it would come back in resolution form to be considered by the council. Uh, you know, I, if, if the council is comfortable with building that into the, the budget model, it, it would generate about twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition.
I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm proposing it, cuz that was the point of the utility. So if it's not maintaining what it was created for, then same with the Stormwater. So I'm proposing that and at the time of the resolution, I guess we will vote on it either way, but. That would be my suggestion.
Hey, Tim, can you clarify for me, it's, um. Based on trip charges, so is it, if we're going to increase that, is that basically the cost per trip? That we're increasing by that percentage?
Well, the, the transportation utility has two component, the fee has two components, one is the base fee.
Yep.
And then the trip charge.
Okay.
So the, based on the Consumer Price Index of five point four three one percent. Um, the base fee would increase from five dollars and twelve cents to five dollars and forty cents. And the trip charge would increase from a dollar forty-eight per trip to a dollar fifty-six per trip.
Okay, and is, um. Did we miss a year in terms of raising it, the consumer index, you know, the?
That was not increased last year.
Alright, is that something we just? Uh, missed out on, or is it, huh?
Yeah, it wasn't proposed or anything like that in the twenty-twenty-three budget.
How do we, I mean, if we, if it's something we built into it and we kinda wanted to have that.
Right.
How do we?
Well, it, it. You don't have to increase it at all if you don't want to, I think what it was is, is that the ordinance was written that only a majority of vote for. Base, you know, the Consumer Price Index was required, anything above and beyond that was two-thirds, but it's not required to increase it for the CPI.
Okay.
So, the, the reason I moved to put the two-thirds vote in is cuz at the time, it was being proposed that the utility be utilized for. Uh, it was close to two and a half million dollars.
Yeah, I know, I agree with that, yeah.
So. I, I guess for future councils, we'll have to make sure we hit that CPI every year, otherwise, we just miss out a year. And we have to get a two-thirds vote to go above and beyond that year's CPI. So we could do that this year, we'd need two-thirds to catch up, or we can just go with this year's CPI and make sure we don't miss going forward.
Yeah, so I guess that was my question too, is how do we not miss it, I guess, how do we, how do we put it in the discussion every year, I guess? Just remember, or is there a way, uh, you know, I don't know, do you know what I'm saying, or no?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, since it's not required in the, uh, in, in the ordinance to increase it by CPI, yeah, we just have to make sure that we include it in the. Propose it in the budget each year.
Okay.
And I'll make some budget notes on the, the Payment Replacement TUD Fund to, to at least propose that each year.
Alright, thanks.
Joe?
And, and part of the reason I, I think too, that the, um, we didn't look at it last year was because. The ordinance was adopted in April of last year and billing didn't start until July. And so, it really wasn't a full year that, I mean, just past the full year mark, just three months ago, so. Um, I'm guessing that's likely the case, but, um, moving forward here, I think it'd be much more natural.
I had a question, uh, you, before, when we were talking about the Stormwater Utility, you said that Waterworks and Lighting, they charge a fee for that. Do they also charge a fee for the? Uh, transportation utility?
They charge us the twenty-five thousand dollar implementation fee to set up the billing, the, the abidase and the billings in, but. Have not charged us for the monthly at, at this point.
Do you know what the, um, Stormwater Utility, is that like a five dollar check charge that they, that they give to you because they gotta write you out a check? Or is it more than five dollars?
For, for their, what they charge for Stormwater?
Correct.
Isn't it like fourteen thousand a year, does that sound familiar? Let me look here.
Seven, seventeen thousand.
Seventeen, uh. Yep.
That seems a bit high.
It, it, it's based on a, a PSC allocation, they, they allocate the, the, the monthly, the billing, the collection. Um, you know, between water, sanitary, they charge us for collecting the sanitary or the wastewater fees. And then obviously, the, uh, um, Stormwater Utility Fee. So they have a calculation that they, they do. And, you know, allocate it out between the three.
Sure.
Um, it's, it's, well, it's, it's based on, you know, like, for like the, the wastewater, it also includes, uh, meter maintenance and things like that. Because wastewater is based on the water usage, so they include those charges in there, rate of return on that. Which is consistent with the, with the PSC is from what I understand. Anything else?
Uh, so then, snow and ice, uh, the bottom of the page after the pavement replacement plan. Um, again, just our, uh, it's the same budget as last year. Um, just showing our, the three percent wage increase that, that we were given. Um, materials, just in going through it, um, we were actually. I- in the budgeting process, we were actually budgeting for, for more material than we were actually purchasing, so. You'll, that's just the deduction is, is to, to the two thousand tons of salt that we purchase annually to salt our roads and sand salt. Uh, brush and weed control, again, uh, same budget as last year, the only difference is, is the, uh, equipment rate. Uh, when Tim and I converted it from twenty nineteen to current rates. Uh, the two newer lawnmowers that we've had in place for the last three years adjusted those rates up that. To, to cover those increases of that fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the brush and weed control, that's for mowing pretty much any area that's not within the parks, uh, any of our road rightaways. Um. Uh, and then, uh, going through and string trimming the weeds in the islands and then spraying those, trying to, so that the weeds don't come back. Um, so that it looks presentable throughout the summer season and stuff like that, so. Uh, street signs and markings, um, again, so that's for, um, going through and upping, updating signs that don't meet the MUTCD standards. Um, going through and, and, uh, you know, some of the little projects that, that we passed here this last, the summer with, uh. No parking around the schools, um, pavement marking, obviously. Uh, one of the things that, that Joe and I have been battling here the last two years is with the, the Bureau of Railroads. Um, a lot of our railroad crossings have not been, um, painted for advanced warnings. Um, neither one of us can understand why they never were, but, so we're trying to catch those up, so this budget also includes, um. Six more of those crossings that, that we have left over to bring up to the current standards. Um, as well as going through on our state highway system, we hire a contractor to paint, um, the directional areas, arrows, I'm sorry, on the street. They come in and paint them with epoxy versus our water-based paint. Um, which, if we do it with water-based, they'll last a year, epoxy, we get five years out of them and. We spend, we spend twice the amount of money to have them do it in epoxy, but like I say, it lasts five times longer, so. Going through and hitting those intersections where the arrows have, have faded. Um. The material, you'll see deduction on that, um, I had as a project this year to, uh. This is the second year that we've been doing the Memorial Walk in the downtown area on West Grand Avenue. Um, so with the Memorial Walk, the banners are five-foot banners instead of, uh, forty-eight inch. And so, um. We're purchasing banners for the Christmas time, um, is what was budgeted last year, and so that's just showing what the reduction is, is. Obviously, we're not purchasing banners this year, uh, for anything else, cuz we're gonna have everything that we need to, so. Um, that would be the reduction, as well as adding flags to the downtown on West Grand Avenue. Uh, when we installed those, um, light poles, there was not flag brackets on them. Um, and with going with the, uh, Memorial Walk, we no longer switch the banners out for the Fourth of July and, and Flag Day and things like that. Because the, uh, memorial banners are up from, uh. I think it's Veterans Day to, uh, Memorial Day to Veterans Day, so obviously, we don't take them down, so that's why. Uh, purchasing the flag brackets so that we can have those up for, for next year in, in the downtown area. Uh, garbage collection, um, again, it's just an adjustment of the wages. Otherwise, everything is, is staying the same on the garbage collection, um, until you go to the next page. That has the contract with, uh, waste management on there. Uh, they're doing their, um, two dollar and twenty-eight cents, um, per ton. Uh, increase to the contract as the contract reads. Um. Next item is a city landfill site, uh, Tim and I have been discussing this item or contract item for quite some time. You'll see that there's no budget for that, what we did is we removed that, um, those monies that were typically budgeted there. And included that into the composting, um, that's virtually the, um. Our city pit is an old landfill, um, a- and so really, what was budgeted was simply opening the gates and, and closing the gates for our city pit was under this. So we're all, just including it all into one budgetary item so that it doesn't get, get missed. Um, uh, gotta go back to the landfill contract, again, those tipping fees are based off of a five-year average. Of the amount of tons taking, taking to the landfill or whatever, so that's how that, the current contract at an average of five years. For the amount of garbage that we generate. Recycling, again, same thing, same budget, uh, as last year, as far as dollar-wise go. Um, except for the three percent increase in the wages. Um. They did not, Waste Management did not, um, adjust the recycling contract. Um, so that fifty-seven thousand dollars is the contract payment to get rid of the recycling on an annual basis. And again, that's a five-year average at the current, um, contract amount. Um, our compost, composting then, the work under the composting, uh, includes, as I said earlier. Um, a portion of my salary or administrative assistance salary and then one of the supervisors. It also covers, uh, one week of yard waste collection in the spring and then two weeks of yard waste collection in the fall. Um, we do a monthly brush pickup, um. For picking up piles curbside, um, four-by-six-by-ten-foot pile. Um, and then we also, uh. Go through and, you know, turn our compost and, and as was approved at, uh, last month's, uh. Sorry, last month or the month before at Public Works, um, we are going to retain thirty percent of our compost. Um, on an annual basis and make it available for the residents. And then the remainder of it, we're in the process currently of selling it as a raw product so that we don't have to, you know, so we may have a cost savings there. Where we don't have to handle it as many times and, um, so we'd have just the cost savings there and then we may also be able to generate some revenue off of it. At selling it as a raw product versus a finished product. Um, because the composting of it, or sorry, the screening of it is one of the most expensive parts of it, just because it's such a slow process, because of the. The moisture and the heat and everything like that being in it, it takes a lot of time to run it through the screener. Because of the, the moisture and the heat and everything like that being in it, it takes a lot of time to run it through the screener, so.
Jake?
Paul, you know, I've been contacted by a resident about this, I looped you in, so just to clarify, there will be enough compost available?
Yeah, so.
For comparative use to previous years?
So it'll probably be 30% of what we had available for, you know, previous years, very similar to this year. When, when we spoke this spring, it was just a simple fact that we tried to, um, manage it differently. We left it in piles versus putting it in the windrows, um, which takes virtually twice as long for it to become, come from the, the raw compost down to something that was screenable. Um, and so that's why it wasn't available this spring.
Yeah. You know how passionate people are about their, their compost, um, just makes, the same amount's gonna be available, it's, we're gonna have enough compost for everybody?
Like I say, the, the hope is yes, that we're gonna have enough that's available. It's not gonna be the same that's been available for, you know, not, it'll be the same as what was available for this year. Maybe not necessarily, I mean, shoot, we used to have compost coming out of our ears.
Right.
You know, um, and we had to move it for, uh, the BMX races so that they had enough places, you know. So it's gonna be in a manageable state, I guess is the best thing to say.
And can be adjusted year by year?
Yep, definitely.
Usage, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, cause, you know, people love their compost, so I wouldn't wanna take that out. The, selling the raw materials, how much revenue do you think that'll generate?
I'm not sure, we'll see. Like I say, um, I think that there could be, uh, probably anywhere from 20 to $30,000 worth of savings in our budget. You know, eventually, um, because that's what it takes us to turn it multiple times, um, move it around, screen it. I mean, that's the thing, you know, we go through and screen it and make it a product, there's, there's a lot of cost in that. So, uh, but again, it's, it's the service that we provide and, and that's what our choice is, is to provide that for, for our residents, so. But they, they could, you know, they could, uh, depending upon how it, it comes about, it's, I'm writing it so that, a contractor could come in and load it themselves, so then we don't have any additional cost into it. So you might get, you know, a dollar fifty a yard or $2 a yard for it. Because obviously there's nobody around here that's, that's, that's not true. There's nobody around here that's using a large quantity of it. So they have to truck it, you know, to, uh, the local begging, begging places is up in Wausau. But there may be somebody else around here that's willing to start a company that goes through and beg it. So that they don't have that increased cost in trucking it someplace, so, you know. Obviously, we're not gonna do it where it costs us money to give it away, so.
Right, so the residential compost and the contractor compost will be separate? So that the residents who say use it for their garden or their flower bed, they have their pile and then this, raw material that we're talking about, the contractors coming and picking up, those would be separate?
No, so everything is still gonna be one large pile, just like it is. The intent of it, uh, that was passed at the Public Works Committee is, is that we would retain 30% of the compost that we get at the end of the year for next year. So if there's a, if there's 10,000 yards sitting in the pile, we would keep 30% of that, so 3,000 yards. And then we would go through and sell 7,000 yards of raw compost. You know, raw being that it's not been screened, it's not been put in windrows and turned. We're just simply selling the pile, how it sits there, starting November 15th, after we close the compost site for the year.
Okay, so. I, maybe you'll have to speak to what happened at Public Works, but con, a contractor and residential pile, you said are the same. So is a contractor gonna be able to go in there and take all the compost that grandma wants to use for her garden or flower bed or where?
No, I mean, well, I'm, it'd be very, you know, we'd have to increase our, um, gatekeeper fees and everything like that. If we're gonna have to have somebody at the compost pile making sure that, um, you know, a resident is getting the compost versus a non-resident versus a, a compost or a contractor. You know, right now, we don't police it, it's screened, comes off the screen, it's sitting in a pile. And anybody who has a compost tag comes in there and, and he can either take it for free or we sell it for what our cost is to get rid of it.
Okay, I'm not gonna go too far into that, but.
And, and we can, maybe I'm misunderstanding you Jake.
No, no, I, I think the rest of the discussion probably happened outside of this. But when you were talking about, uh, changes in the amount of the budget and the availability and why that was, I thought it was a appropriate topic. But I don't wanna get too far.
Sure. Any other questions on the compost? Uh, maintenance of other city property, um, that's not anything that, it's mostly just a catch-all, there's times where, you know, the certain, uh, railroad track or, or something like that has something happen to it that, that we just have to have a place to charge it to or whatever. So it's just consistent, keeping it consistent from year to year. So that there's budgeted available for those kind of, um, surprise projects or whatever. The last item on there, whatever, is just showing the proposal for, um, the update to our fleet. You'll notice on there, I believe it was at Public Works back in, uh, sorry, Finance and Property back in June or July. Uh, it was approved for us to, um, get on the list to try to order a new garbage truck. That's on there, that'll be, it's mine, I wasn't made aware of whether or not we got on the list or not yet to get a truck. But that's scheduled to be delivered in 2025 if we do. We should be getting notice here in the fourth quarter, um, that, that we made the, um, list. Uh, the other truck is a replacement of a, uh, 2007 pickup down in our sign shop. The other, the next one, um, is replacing a truck within our building maintenance. Uh, we kind of took a truck that the engineering department wasn't going to use anymore and fixed it up, uh, so that it's usable. Like I say, in my narrative there, the truck has 110,000 miles and it's starting to have some head gasket issues and things like that. And, and the utility body is, is wearing because it's a steel utility body. The other one that I, we're identifying is, uh, replacing one of our street sweepers from 2003. It's our, it's our spare, um, and it has, uh, um, over 15,000 hours on it. And there's some repairs that we did, uh, five, six years ago when it was one of our main machines that are starting to show wear again. And so that is the cost that you're seeing for a new one. But, uh, we are also looking for, uh, you know, a two or three-year-old one, just to try to save some of this, street fleet, uh, utility money because we have some other possible needs in the future. You know, that, this stuff is just astronomical, it's crazy. You know, 2019, I bought a, a one-ton pickup truck for $48,000. And in January of this year, we took delivery of one that was 72,000 for the exact same truck. So, um, trying to figure out a way that we can be sustainable and, and, and everything like that is, um, a moving, moving target. Then the last two items, um, those are just trucks that again, were approved, uh, earlier in the budget that, um, are scheduled to be built. The PO has written, they just aren't gonna take place in, in 2023, so we just include, or sorry, 2022, so we, no, I said it right. 2023, so we included in the 2024 budget, showing the carryover, so. Uh, the last item, I believe that, uh, I'm not sure, uh, if Jake Klingfort spoke of it the other night. But we actually budget, uh, the bike trail maintenance in their budget. And so, uh, just to go over the project, it's, uh, replacement of the bike trail that goes underneath the west side of the Expressway Bridge. Right there, there is some, uh, failure between the bike trail and the, the river wall, I'll call it. Where this year we put, um, three or four yards of washed stone in there because it actually eroded due to the spring runoff. Um, and so we're proposing to kind of match the same thing that we did, um, down on the bike trail. Where it, um, bottlenecks on, on Lions, by Lions Park there. So it'll be a solid concrete path, um, which would go over the top of the river wall then, so it shouldn't ever erode on the backside again. With a new railing, um, that would match then, uh, that same railing that's down there on that bottleneck piece. One of the other issues is, is that railing that's there right now is, um, I believe it's a four-by-four timber. That is like down to two inches by two inches, you know, if you leaned up against it hard enough, it may fall over. And it's all encased in concrete and stuff like that, so it'd be pretty, you know, could be done to replace it or anchor it something differently. But, you know, that's kind of the last project for, for that bike trail from there down to the, um, at least the DOT. And realistically down to the, um, Bowles Creek boat landing is, is relatively decent. Something that we probably would have to do more to that in the next 10 or 12 years. But, you know, it would, it's, we've eliminated all the, the trip hazards and everything like that, so this is, that's just the last piece of it. So if it, if, uh, you know, that additional funds that's there is not, um, you know, doable. We could definitely budget the same amount and then do that project, you know, two years from now or something like that. It's not something that has to be done next year, but it's something that is gonna need attention within the next two or three years, in my opinion.
Jake, then Patrick?
So Paul, uh, street and park fleet replacement account balance, you're gonna spend, uh, potentially if the truck comes through, right? The new garbage truck will be 145,000 over?
So again, that truck isn't gonna take delivery till 2025. So we're just showing you that, what you approved and everything like that, so. So it's really.
Okay, so, but for budget purposes, I mean, are you counting, you're planning on paying for it this year?
No. That, that fleet account is like a savings account where everything is set aside. So it's just simply showing the funds that are in that account currently. And then, then the deductions of stuff that we have allocated already or approved already coming out of that account.
So are we over or under?
For.
Estimated balance at December 31st, 2024.
Right, it's, um, we're slightly, you know, as you can see there, there's a, a transfer from the General Fund of Reserves of 150,000. And then from Stormwater Utility Fund, 100,000 to go towards the stripper, which is the street sweeping account and things like that. And I think one of the things is, is that, you know, with the, the 150 coming from General Fund is account for some of those inflationary prices increases in equipment. That the equipment rates that we charge internally, you know, were not set to absorb such a, a large and quick increase in the price of equipment. So, um, other than our standard, uh, equipment rates that we calculate and incorporate throughout the budget, as you see in those equipment line items. There's no additional new funds being budgeted to, i- included in this account.
So do we need to adjust the yearly amount that goes into these funds or is that built in?
That's what we did in the 2024 rates, is that we, we, we incorporated in those, that inflation that, in the increase in equipment that has occurred. So then going forward, those rates then will be adjusted, but also that will, will include that increase in the prices. So this is kind of a small catch-up year, so let's take the, to offset those inflationary, you know, pressures that, you know, occurred, uh, this year and the year before for equipment, which depleted the, the fund a little bit. Cause they, you know, such a large inflation was not anticipated at the time those rates were set.
Right.
So now we're kind of, but now we've incorporated that into the 2024 rates.
So in 2025, it'll look different when we come out of the, this budget and they're paying in at a, to the fund at a different rate?
Right, so, yeah, and this is like, like I said, it's like there's, you know, other than what's built into the new rates, there's no, a new additional funds being, levied or new money in this, you know, the 150 from, the general fund is coming from reserves, so it's not affecting the budget per se.
Counting. Counting.
Patrick?
Okay, so I have two things. The first thing is, is when, on the bike trails, the, the other day when we did have that with Jake, he said, um, if you have questions about bike trails, just ask Paul Baller. So, I did have questions. You're saying that we could go back to last year's budget for that, which was 18,400? We would have to go next year?
We could not do, we could not do the project this year, still budget that $18,000, not spend it, move it forward to 2020, or 2025 and then do the project in 2025 rather than in 2024.
Oh, so it's like a, you can't split it up between the two years is what I was, it's like a one-shot deal for them to come and do it? And are they, they're resealing it, is that what I understand?
No, we're redoing the project, we're, the, our staff is redoing it. So it's gonna be, instead of an asphalt trail underneath the Expressway Bridge, it's going to be a concrete structure all the way over to the top of the river wall. Very similar to what we did, um, down just south of Lions Park.
Okay.
So it'll be, uh, concrete bike, it'll be a concrete bike trail for, I think it was 110 feet. And then it'll have a, um, three, it'll have two top bars and a bottom bar. Two-by-two square metal, um, fence with that three-foot piece of the wire mesh on the bottom piece of it.
That sounds great. The other question, um, the other night, Alderman Austin had said that you're planning on doing a salt shed? Or something like that, that that was, uh, is that correct? Storage shed? I might have misheard. Was that on the, the budget tonight? Did I miss that tonight?
So that was submitted, um, back when there was a request for the ARPA funds. And then it wasn't resubmitted, but I do have updated pricing if you would like to see those.
So it's not in the budget currently?
But that, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm fine.
That was part of that discussion, uh, I don't, I don't think, was that one of the committee of the holes?
I wasn't here that night.
Right, when we discussed the FEMA and ARPA funds and that was kind of one of the proposed uses and we're still kinda, and I think there was a motion made to, kinda use, uh, for the storage shed and then the rest towards street construction, I do believe. Yeah, and, and I think that Paul's working on that, so that's why it's not officially in yet, cause we're still kinda.
Oh, that was a ARPA fund, alright.
Yeah, so.
That's why I missed it, because I missed it.
Right, so that's, that's why you don't see it in the budget right now until we kind of come to a firm decision on how we're gonna utilize those funds.
Sounds great, that's all I had, thank you.
So, what I was mentioning is, is that if there is an appetite to send that additional $18,000 in 2024, we could just budget the, um, same $18,000 that we've been pretty much budgeting to do bike trail maintenance. For one year, not spend any of those dollars to carry those dollars forward. And then we'd have the 18,000 budgeted again in 2025 to get that $36,000.
What would that mean, you're gonna do the, under the bridge on the west side bike, bike path?
In 2025. Right now, it's budget, like I say, it's budgeted right now to spend $36,000 to do the bike trail in 2024. If the council chooses not to spend that additional $18,000, we could budget it, carry it forward and do it in 2025.
I mean, it's a, it's a nightmare under there. It's been the same since I was a kid, you'd stare over that two-by-four and then you can see the current ripping away. And, I mean, I don't know, we, we go under there, I, it doesn't look good and it's pretty close, kind of scary. I, I would like to see it done sooner than later if we're spending the money anyway. It doesn't look good and it's pretty close, kind of scary, I, I would like to see it done sooner than later if we're spending the money anyways.
Yep, like I said, that's why I identified it, cause it, number one, it kind of finishes off everything for that north half of the trail. And because of the safety hazard that it is.
So twenty twenty-four, you guys?
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I, that's a part of, you go over there to that park and that, that part of the trail. And it, when you're down there with your kids, it's almost, you gotta go under the bridge to keep going, and it's almost like. Stayin' close to me right here, cause you can see the current just ripping away and there's nothing holding there. And the trail, just the way it's paved because of the bridge, it has to tug, hug right up against it, so I, I think. Yeah, address, if we're spending the money, address it sooner than later.
Well, I'm in favor of doing it in twenty twenty-four as well. I think the general consensus, it seems like. Tom? Yeah, okay. Anything else? Go for it.
So your building, Paul, just two quick questions, where's this gonna go and how big is it gonna be?
So the building itself is going to go in the, actually our, our, our fenced-in area. The building itself is seventy by a hundred and eight with a twenty-foot lean-to off of the one side. That seventy foot by a hundred and eight will allow us to have three bays. To be able to put three separate pieces of equipment, nose to tail, in there. So the cost of that is, is that three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That has a cost in there for us to dig the footings and level the site for the building. That's just an estimate from the, the one general contractor that I was able to get me to get an estimate. The original request was back in twenty twenty-one, so this is the same gentleman that did it back then. Obviously, you would have to go out for bids and everything like that, and speaking with. Electrician in the area. He's recommending that we have to run a separate service into there off of one of our poles, because the other hundred amp service that we have. In our other exterior building is pretty much full. So with this building, it would have. What did I say, ten, ten different circuits for block heaters. Because if you run multiple block heaters off of one circuit, it'll trip the breaker, so we'd have to have individual circuits for that. You know, the biggest thing for this building is, is, you know, I, I gave you a list of, of all the stuff that pretty much sits outside three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, I just told you how, you know, that pickup truck is, is, was forty-eight thousand and now it's seventy-two thousand, well. You know, we have a spare garbage truck that sits outside, it's only used when the other ones fail. So if it's sitting outside, outside in the winter time and then it's got six inches of snow on it. It's gonna take time and, and money to get the truck running, you know, it's gotta be plugged in. Then somebody's jumping in it and finishing off the day because it's broke, you know. In two thousand and, I think it was eighteen, when we built the aquatic center, we, we finished, you know, the same day that. That the aquatic center was brought to Finance and Property. We were gonna bring to Finance and Property looking at building a new garage, you know, we had, we spent a year doing feasibility study. We thought we'd be crazy to come and ask for twelve million dollars for a garage the same day that we were asking for twelve million dollars for an aquatic facility. You know, our, our building, you, I, I, I don't, I think there's maybe been a few of you that have been over there, but not very many, you know, but. We're parking multi-axle dump trucks twelve inches away from each other in the back room because the building isn't big enough. You know, and when you do that, guess what, stuff gets backed into, so we've had fenders that have been damaged, things like that. You know, we're trying to get our stuff to last long. And it's not gonna last any longer sitting outside, you know, in the weather. So, you know, we have these tandem axle trucks that we use in our snow plowing. That we go outside the day of a snow event and hook up the plow. And then it sits in the alley and those trucks, nobody else can go out of the garage until those trucks are gone. If we had this building, we could put it in there, have the block heaters plugged in. Isn't gonna be six inches of snow on the trucks when the guys get in them, we're gonna be able to go out, things like that. Like I say, we, we have, you know, millions of dollars of investment in the equipment that, yes, they're, they're twenty years old, but it's still. Million, or, you know, three hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have to take to spend to replace those trucks, you know. Earlier than what we were planning on, so. It's also gonna be a spot where we can, once the budgets are approved, rather than waiting till the springtime. We could order the, our pipe materials prior to the end of the year. So the ten percent or the five percent possible price increase that might happen, we can kind of be in front of that if we need to. And it's gotta lean to, so the UV from the sun isn't gonna start to break down the pipe and things like that, so. I think it's, I went to brought it to you if I didn't think it's, it's worthwhile, obviously. We've been making it without it, but we're not gonna see, I'm sure, we're not gonna see a garage for a while. But I, I think this would be, it's not gonna be in the way for a new building, if, if we do get a new building sometime in the future. There's gonna be a need for it, it's gonna be less square footage that we have to rebuild. So, sorry, I rambled.
Jake?
I, I brought this up the night we discussed, but I don't, I don't think you were here. The big cost coming down the road is the new city garage could be, we don't know how many years from now. But if we're looking at the people who are kids, all the people who are gonna pay for that in the future. How much does this help us extend the life of the current garage or save us costs down the road when we gotta build it anyway? Cause that's what really makes it appealing to me, on top of all the things you mentioned about maintaining equipment is. Is this a way where we can avoid bonding for new city garage longer? Than we would have to if we just leave everything as is, and I, we're, there's a new garbage truck that's. In this budget, that, as we, all the stuff we buy, it just, it's sitting outside, so. But if you could just talk to the city garage life and, is this going to change how long you can? Make the current life of the city garage, or is it, is it no impact, is it gonna stay as is? Like you'd still need one at the same exact point in time, you're gonna need one anyways? What impact does this have towards that?
Well, I think the, I think it's kind of two separate animals. To me personally, I believe that. Yes, when we come to the time period to build a new garage. It probably will save us some money when it comes to that point. Becau- but I think the, the use of it may change at that point. Just because. You're gonna have probably auxiliary items that aren't gonna be put in the cit, the new building that can go into this building, same thing. Pieces of equipment that are sitting outside. You know, and, and I guess. Who knows when we're gonna get a new building? You know, the current building that we are in right now was built in nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, and the latest addition is the shop, which was built in nineteen ninety. You know, we have, we have staff that don't have lockers in the locker room, cause they're out on the. The sidewalk out in the shop. What this would allow us to do currently, the same thing, you know, a lot of our work is cyclical. Obviously, this time of the year, we're switching from summer into winter. So we can take the stuff that we use in the summertime and put this in this other building. And in the summertime, we can take our, you know, our three motor graders that we only need one of them in the summertime. We can take those other two pieces of equipment and put them out in this building, they're not gonna be in the sun, they're out of the way. So it's, it's mostly just to keep things out of the weather. You know, like I say, we, we have one person that spends a lot of time moving stuff around. And even in the morning, you know, we park trucks and trailers down the center aisle. And we have to move two or three pieces of equipment to get, to get other stuff out, you know, in some ways it could be a cost savings. Cause all of a sudden, not in my time, but in, in other people's time at the garage, we had a lawnmower that started on fire in the shop. You know, if one of our garbage trucks starts on fire, if it's one of the, the back ones. You know, that whole building could burn down where if they were parked in a row. You could get some of that stuff out of the building before it started on fire. Right now, if the right piece of equipment started on fire, you're not getting a single thing out of there because you have to move, like I say, four different pieces of equipment to get one out. You know, then all of a sudden, somebody forgets that they started it, so it sits out in the back and idles all day long or whatever. I mean, I think personally that, that if this was built, it would pay for itself just with the, the creation of. Of, you know, not having to move things, not having to park on top of each other, you know, and, and our stuff would last longer. But I mean, I can't, I can't tell you what is gonna happen, you, I mean. Somebody tell me the date that we're gonna build a new garage and I can say, yeah, we could push it off another two years or whatever, you know. I don't think anybody knows what that date is.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking hypothetically, can this make that date further out? Essentially what I was asking, it is, cause then it seems more like an investment. It is an investment in all the ways you said, but it really. Frames it different when we're, we, we know what goes on at the city garage, but. It, cost-wise, if we put this building there. Does the city garage last longer? And are you saying we need a new one either way, and at that time, the building use would change of this one? That would be built, and there would be another one that would be better than that, I mean. I don't wanna spend four hundred now, and then whenever we decide to do a new city garage, it's like, well, that was kind of just for. Eight years and now we, we don't.
Again, I don't think that this is gonna be money that's wasted, I think it's gonna still be a space for overflow of equipment and things like that. I don't know. I think it's, like I say, I think it's a need, I think it's gonna be cost-effective for the future. And, and in theory, I guess it could save on the cost to build a new building because. There, there might be five pieces of equipment that sit in this building instead of sitting in, you know, a heated, a heated shop for. You know, and just sit there type thing, so I don't think it's money that's wasted by any means.
Do other municipalities leave their equipment outside of similar our size? Or what, what does their situation look like, what's the standard?
I don't think there is a standard, it's whatever the municipality can raise for money, you know, I mean. There's, City Marshfield right now is looking at building, or they're looking at a cooperative agreement with Wood County Highway. Because they wanna use, where their public works department is in the downtown area, they wanna use that for developable space, cause it's in their downtown, just off of Veterans Parkway. And so they're looking at doing a collaborative thing with the county, and they're looking at removing. Their engineering department from City Hall and having everything under one roof out into a separate location, you know. There's, so I can only speak to Stevens Point. They have, you know, multiple metal buildings like this, and again, their, their public works department and their parks department is in one building. And I think their. Their building, I'm guessing, is a sixties model, seventies model, and then they have a, a cold storage building that's separate. Again, you know, it's, it's very challenging to look at municipalities and compare municipalities because. There is no two that's alike, you know, we're the only one in central Wisconsin that has a construction crew. Si- City of Stevens Point, they collect their own garbage, we collect our own garbage, Marshfield and Wausau are all contracted services.
Yeah, I'm. So. I'm not thinking more about all that, is there, is there any, is it the standard to leave? A million and something dollars of equipment outside, or is, are we just out here doing it and we're?
It's all what people can afford and not afford, I'm assuming.
So others do, do what we do?
Either the contractor that I came from, our stuff sat outside.
Okay.
You know, so.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to direct either Tim or Joe or a combination thereof. To come up with a proposal to increase the transportation utility by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. And give us some examples of the highest trip charge and residential charges of what that would look like. If you guys could have that by November second, I don't know if that's possible, excellent. And I, I work for a pretty large construction company, and we have multimillion-dollar pieces of equipment sitting outside all year long, so.